It's it's up it's up. They have things to do with this. They know the country because they live there certain years or so.
Yeah, like you know, he speaks him.
Yeah, he had he. He's a holiday radio that comes here to see.
Oh, I don't got a lot.
When Johnny's. That we got the rain pass. I like rain, but not this time of year. Maybe I should be such a sticky, such a sticky guy. I I. We know we appreciate you.
I know that's. And this kitchen.
We're on.
I do speak for gay. Roger.
Yeah.
There is. Well, well, we all need a junior. The body you got is. One day. You got here. That's my business. Hey, I'm a sort of. They have a lot of the public. Let's go.
Official.
Apparently, you start cracking away.
That's why I'm sitting here. That'll leave them more luggage.
All right. Good morning, everybody. Today is Tuesday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty five. It is nine A M. We'll call the county county board of commissioners to order. And with that, we'll begin with the pledge allegiance. We'll have Commissioner McElhany. Call for public comment can be submitted in person or by telephone by calling six oh five eight eight two six two four eight. Or six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven. Commissioners, any conflict of interest?
No.
Seeing none, look for an action to approve the November eighteenth agenda.
Approve. Second.
Motion by McElhany, second by Schwer. Any discussion on that agenda? Not all favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Action to approve the November fourth minutes. By Jonathan, second by McElhany. Any discussion? Not all favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Monthly reports will begin with the auditor's office. Renate.
All right. Good morning.
Morning.
So levy calculations for tax payable in twenty twenty six. Have been submitted to the South Dakota Department of Revenue. So we're waiting for them to go through and get their final approval. I think there will be a change, though. Evidently, there's been an issue with A T S in the city of Webster, so I'll have to go back in and redo the Webster school. So I may have to do some changing there. Uh, I will be attending another election school. Coming up here. Um, and I am monitoring your end budget. So that everybody is no compliant. Uh, we will be doing a budget supplement coming up here. Um, the second for one of our budgets that will want to get that one. Um, it's our rate funding. We have the cash. I just didn't budget enough, just not knowing how many projects would be approved. So fix it. We have the cash. I just maybe need to move some over.
Any questions to the audit? All right. If not, let's move on to the director equalization. Sean. Good morning. Right, Sean.
I don't have a whole lot to report. Um, the appraisers have basically finished up. Out by the lake in the property that they had went to um already. And they have transitioned into doing all the building permits or doing. Um, basically, any of the new build, big commercial properties, things like that first before being the bad weather hit. Um, the office staff was finished taking applications for the assessment programs. Um, everything is doing number one. They're working on sales up through the end of October, and they get those sent to the department revenue. And then once those are sent in, I will start looking at the intentions um for the twenty twenty six assessment here. Table twenty twenty seven, she's due the first of the year.
Are you following the property tax discussion?
Um, yes. Yep, and we just had a um. A district eight meeting. Um, right now, there's like. Twenty different bills are talking about mold. The um property tax committee, um, we'll see. What comes out of that? So. Um, a lot of them are just overlapping each other, but. Um, last year they did pass um. Bill two sixteen that limits the owner occupied um assessment increase to three percent. But that and that will be for the twenty sixth assessment year, but that is countywide. Um, so basically, my countywide owner occupied values from when we've been up the local like three percent. For this next year, minus April, so like new houses would seem like that. Don't stop towards that three percent, but. Um, we're. We're watching it. We're doing pretty good. Last year, we're about the same as where we were last year, and that was pretty good, too. So I don't think we're going to have to worry too much about that. That's where we only came on it last year. But I can perceive that we need something, we want to do something.
Yeah, I think it's a hot button item in the legislature, so.
Property taxes are going up all very heavily.
Twenty nine eighty percent. He could. And one of the um. Candidates that's running for governor has the problem that they will do away with all property taxes. So just be prepared.
They they are talking about putting something on ballot for twenty twenty six that will do that and they'll basically just. Making other tax for it.
Wasting paper. And I. But do away with all 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 property taxes. And I know everybody at my table looked at each other and said.
So have you heard that gentleman's plan? He actually has a legitimate plan to replace the property tax.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's let's let the legislature worry about that for right now, but we will be following that closely. I know that the government has one, too, and so.
We'll see. We watch them throughout the year and everything, but we don't really get too hardcore in following them until um towards the end when. Then they'll actually, the department revenue will call the directors of, you know, the directors and wants to come, you know, give their take on it to the legislature so that they can kind of understand what it would do for our side of it, but. I mean, our assessment side of it has nothing to do with actual tax dollars that come out of anything. So I mean, it's more just how it's going to be implemented is what we look at versus anything else, so.
Well, glad to see you following that. Thank you very much. It will be an interesting session about as it relates to property taxes. Lot of different ideas out there, so we'll see where it goes. All right, community service director. Morning. Hi, Sarah.
Morning, Sarah.
Morning, Sarah.
Okay, so um. Hi.
Hi.
Um. So our data sheet, our numbers are down a little. They look like they're down a little bit for October, but I will tell you intensity level is higher than ever. So even though we're, it looks like we serve us. The people that were serving have a lot of needs and take a lot of time, so that just a reminder that. Numbers don't always reflect intensity there. Um, and I think it's probably back up in here in November to promote what we're doing here. Um, we have had another funeral. Um, we had another one coming yesterday that was probably. We're doing fine on our budget for the year, um, but we're probably averaging one or two a month for the few months expenses. Um, again, the South Dakota carers have ended, so we don't have that anymore, so. We're um reevaluating what Carrie's doing and working on building up her um community health with her case load and um what would you do for that as well? Any questions about any of those numbers? Um, on that chart?
Just the funeral assistance. I I just want. I I guess I. You said one, one of those a month is what we're having.
Probably I will maybe about one to two. I have to go back and look. Some months I. Kind of do the math, but some months we might not have any, but then some months we actually.
Okay.
Yeah. Um. So the for the month, the Medicaid reimbursement of what we were reimbursed for our C H Ws in October was eight hundred and eighty seven dollars and nine percent. They missed a couple of weeks of billing for our November reimbursement is going to be higher for that, so um like it already is. Oh, double that for November. Um, for the C H W grant that we're now going for, that was just under three hundred dollars that we were reimbursed for that. Um, that grant reimburses for anybody that has in. Opioid use disorder or at risk of opioid use disorder, our C H Ws can go for that if they don't have Medicaid, if they're not able to go pay their Medicaid privileges. With that. Um, again, we've been doing some outreach for the C H W to remind the community that those services are available for people that are kind of falling through the cracks or have a higher level of need. Our C H Ws can do intensive case management with them, and so. That um was something our page and Carrie have been spending some time on. We are um the C H W opioid grant, which we are reimbursed for. Um, it looks like that might be an annual thing that we're doing until we're applying for that. Last year it was fifteen thousand dollars per C H W, and this year they've increased it to twenty thousand dollars per C H W. So it would be a forty thousand dollar grant for our office. And that again covers things that aren't reimbursable to any other payer source um and allows our C H Ws to really focus on people with opioid use disorder or at risk of opioid use disorder. I attended a monastery visioning session in October. Um, it was a great session and it looks like they're really focusing on how we can build community to volunteer coordinator and some mentoring program. Sessions and things, so I'm um supporting them where I can, not beating that by any means, but just supporting that initiative. Um. I did attend the early learner summit in Chamberlain, was part of the panel talking about why we have a community, are becoming an early learner community and focusing on that, so that was a. Um, a great event. And then also I attended the Dakota Resources Community Building Conference last week. Again, great opportunities about how we can work together to build our community to support everyone in the community. Um, from. It's all income levels and all social economic classes there. For the systems of care, we have our interagency meeting last week at Midwest Bible Camp. It was well attended, and it seemed like there was some good discussion there. Our agency of the month this month is Sanford Family Planning. And Mary Javicki, who is the nurse for Sanford Family Planning, is our individual of the month. Um, they do a lot of great work supporting um women in our community. Our housing group, we're again working closely with the rest of the steering committee on that and um moving that forward to meet the housing goal of a three percent growth rate in our community in the area. We are, um, there's some funding opportunities that look like they're available for transitional housing that works for me, so that so hopefully we could get transitional housing, which would directly help our clients. Be able to get better long-term housing.
In the form of grants that are available.
Yeah, it would be water to well, it would not be the tony appliance like that funding, but it would be um through the South Dakota Healthing. Um, that's the federal funding right now that's coming down through South Dakota Healthing. Yeah. Um. That our childcare team was continuing to look at is to determine whether how big of a need childcare is in our community. So we're meeting next week and talking about um we updating the community survey to reevaluate where they can go for childcare in our community. And for essentialized location, um, Paddington Connect is finalizing their five one three status, um, just getting that through the process. And then we're looking at numbers to determine what the feasibility is for essentialized locations. As far as um what will cost or isn't affordability and different things like that, but that is moving forward, too. And then always check out Paddington Connect at W W W dot Paddington Connect dot com for events and more information about the community. Try to try to keep that stated.
Sir, the only question I have, I guess, and you brought it up about childcare and what's going to happen here in the near future as far as figuring out where we're at with that, but. From your perspective, where do we sit in the community right now or in our region as far as childcare needs and how are we doing?
Yeah, it's a really good question. I my intention is that affordability is still probably the biggest issue. Um. I I think when we look at childcare. From what I've seen and what I've done, we have to look at um capacity. Is there is there any variable? Is it affordable and is like quality? Um, I think Educare and the My Little Village. Are both working on filling up. We have a lot of in-home providers that it's sort of hard to measure, so the capacity issue, if that's what we need to determine, is that still an issue? Um, so we're really going to be looking at if there is enough capacity, is it affordable for people? And then is it quality? Because you can have a daycare, but if they're sitting in front of TV all day, if they're not getting nutrition and meals, then. That's an issue, too. We want our kids to have a good starting life.
And we do that even with the the project out south of town in My Little Village that we were still going to have a need for. For daycare in this community, so.
Yeah, we would um.
Spots, you know, several hundred spots that weren't going to be able to be filled.
Yeah.
Even even when they're at capacity.
Yeah, and so that's where figuring out how we can make sure that people have. That one's, you know, there's a joke, but it's not really a joke is that you're letting your daycare know you're pregnant before yourself. You know, those kinds of things because you're so worried about daycare or that before you even start trying to have to find daycare because there's such a need, and I think. Um, if we can. Make sure that people have daycare, it's going to help our workforce. Um, we see that in our office all the time. There's a lot of parents that. Can't find daycare that they can afford, so they're not able to work, and it's just like. So that's it's something that affects all assets of the community.
I'm really happy to. Break up the streets. Um. Your facility there uh helps pave the authorities daycare.
Oh, yeah.
And I I I like to see businesses step up and help out those. That's we we sure expect people, and I hope more companies recognize that and will do that, too. That helps.
Yes, Jenkins has a great model and that partnership with Educare. And yeah, that's one of the pieces that we're looking at. Um, W G C has consulted or contracted with um client visionary group to look at options. To help address affordability, and so that's really the word we're exploring.
Oh, the anxiously awaiting the results of that.
Yeah.
See where we need to go.
Thanks.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Do you explain? I'm not, I'm just. Last first time I seen this. They uh. Say about movie, somebody in the secretary, did that come out of your life?
She probably, I think that was through the auditor's office for us, but it is a uh. It's a permit that was issued by the Department of Health to disinterm. Yeah, it's a permit to do that, so.
So what does that mean?
Uh, basically, I think they're going to relocate a body, so.
Without his permission.
Wow.
And he's dead.
You gotta give Meyer and a shovel. He has to help. For the ground.
Well, the individual that's supposed to do with this.
All right, thanks, Sarah.
Thank you. Thank you, Sharon.
And commissioners, just so you know, there was forty five thousand dollars available that we approved in the funeral budget uh for. This year, and we're at eighteen thousand, so we're okay even with the. The one a month or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
I know we watched that closely, so thank you, sir. Come on up, Randy.
Highway Department.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's been a busy month for us. Especially with the snow coming. First off, uh, grandyard destruction week, obviously started with our bridge, private um, working at that city. Uh, we've already got one accident out there. Apparently, it was a city rated individual. Flew through the barricades there, they basically couldn't hold it to the beach public. He wasn't able to be rescued by one of the sheriff's deputies. Thankfully, for the city, good news.
Oh, sheriff's deputy.
And so I've heard what his conditions.
He was beaten up, but he uh definitely survived, and he's very lucky. Um, it's my understanding the payloader that was kind of sitting there. He deflected off of it. Whereas if that wasn't there, he he would have went straight into that crane. As a big crane, it wanted to move. And very lucky.
Well, depends on your definition of lucky, but he's lucky to be alive. Yeah, yeah, lucky to be alive.
Sure, but just so the people are aware of obvious some construction, I'm saying we need to. Yeah, people can be aware, be cautious about accepting all the traffic. All of our roads been straight depression chips after receiving depression chips within the two miles of pound of twenty dash four that this pressure we paid this year. Then I just finished working on the Florence projects, and we would go out there and get some cleanup and some final time products at the intersections and that's cool. Uh, we've done sort of all the work, um, which includes some storing. Around the edges and colors and whatnot, we just simply put down some rip backs and re-remodels to prevent any further erosion. Uh, we have finished fine gravel for the season, so makes some tree removal and tree cleanup work through the season. Uh, we did pick up our new dump truck for northern truck in Fargo after we had the box and agglis installed on it, so they'll be ready pretty soon for the season. Uh, basic instructions, continue to work on our truck storage projects. Backing installed with the drains installed, we're still waiting for the factory to cure. So they have started praying doors, uh, doors are. I'm shipping right now, so we don't know if we'll be able to have the projects this season or at least completed by mid-December. Uh, we did finish our full grass cutting on all of our roads. We have preparation for that nasty word. Uh, we did some work on our snow equipment as far as sanders and whatnot. We replaced all the chains in there. And some sprockets to get them ready and up and running for this upcoming season. Um, also, if they went west first stone, we've been through the season already last Saturday, so we've been seeing guys open the door. Once we put it outside at the intersection, some goes. And a little sore on the west side. But it seems it got worse as the vehicle grass, because it started to be a little grease. Yeah, we must have.
Well, the better prepared you are, the less snow, I mean, that's what I'm hoping for. Keep at it, but he said.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you, Randy.
Well, thank you, Randy.
Thanks, Randy.
Yes. You might want to proceed right away to.
Yeah, yeah, let's do that. Uh, number seven?
Yes.
Action to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash eighteen to set highway fees.
This is for our rental rates on our equipments. Our last update was done in twenty eighteen, so we've made some minor changes to seven areas. Um, the only way you chop the division. Um, first off, starting with the motor grader operator and operator, excuse me, we're increasing that ten dollars to a total of a hundred and twenty one dollars per hour. As far as the rental rate for the motor grader bomb wing, which is basically for our store removal, we're increasing that. Uh, twelve dollars to a hundred and thirty dollars toll. Our trucking cloud, again, for winter store removal, is being increased eleven dollars to ninety three dollars. Our loader, snow ore with operator, we're increasing thirty two dollars, reason for that, taking a little more expense of up to a hundred and ninety nine dollars due to the fact of the operation of that large snowboard. You know, keep a little more expensive on that piece of equipment. And as far as our loader and operator, we're staying the same at a hundred and ten dollars. Our back one operator was staying at a hundred and nineteen dollars. And our mower and operator were increasing by seven dollars, okay, five dollars toll through the season. It's all I had to start with that.
On the rates, Randy.
Yes.
I was looking at it the first time. You you of course found with other colleagues, you have the same back of the situation, just like. Because I'm only, I don't know, I don't know the rate book.
It was no specific rate, but we just looked at equipment operation by the hour, kind of like how are the break in equipment operating, that combined, also. On some cones, I did talk, do not be any rental or equipment, so you have to depend upon local contract, actually, all the work. And I feel that it's better to do that and get the local operators to see the opportunity, but. Thank you very much.
And all when I was on a township for, you know, the townships, you really have. Local farmer that the father's snowmoring farmer, we're on a township road, and they always, you know, kind of. Chat from the epic, how we, you know. You know, it's a supportive difference, five love, five for all, so making out by the rate, you know.
Good, thanks, sir. Is there a big need for now?
Um, right now, we're only actually doing one of the townships, as far as the town itself, but it was not. Uh, it's very limited.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve.
I've had that.
Second by. Any discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Move on to item number eight, so we'll get to you here. Steve shortly. Um, let's move on to item number eight, action to declare highway equipment surplus to be sold at purple way.
It's just for two items I'd like to surplus is our two thousand and two international semi, which we just replaced with the north model this year. And then also our oil shooter, which is length one model. Six hundred gallon oil pot, which we've also replaced with more even this year.
Motion by Johnson, second by McElhany. Discussion, Randy, you have some.
Would keep surplus in purple way.
Okay, motion in a second.
What commission, what what commission would be the purple way to get on all this?
They charge only the buyer. We pay nothing. They they take all the pictures and give all the other times and only charge the purchase.
I'm sorry, that's okay. Good question. All right, let's go ahead and move forward with the vote. All favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to the facility manager. This is Steve. Morning, Steve.
Good morning.
Morning, Steve.
Steve's out fighting.
Pretty small font. You can make that bigger.
I know, it's a two time, it might run out of page. I don't want to have a two page.
That's true.
All right, we're going to start out with the egg building. Um, concrete from the sale ring entrance has been replaced. Um, this is one of the things of the warranty work that is cracked and heaved up. Um, a small section by the sidewalk of the warranty work has been milled. Um, with lane of asphalt this week. It's probably approximately about, oh, probably fifteen by fifteen um. In inside. Um, part of it is is because it didn't drain away from the curb, and so it was improperly installed. Um, and then when this project meets the warranty inspection, um, waiting by. Blais from Van Arrol meet with you all um for final payment of um the parking lot project.
Steve, he was out there yesterday, and the work by the sale of our door. That always blows out every year, looks really nice right now, so go off and take a look at it before it freezes up.
Yeah, well, currently, right now, what they did is they put some stoop or put some um pillars down, embedded down, made holes. So hopefully it don't lift and raise up in front of there, so. Plus, they did a little bit more extra out in where the asphalt, they took a little bit of that out the way out because of the drainage. Getting it so it gets a proper drainage off of that.
It really looks nice right now, you know.
Yeah. Cross my fingers.
Yeah, not to let some people out there all the time, you think when they put those. What I call anchors or.
Right.
They said they were up to their chest in the hole what they done to.
Yeah, I think they went close to almost four to six feet.
Yeah.
So.
But it was a lot of metal.
Way more.
Yeah.
Yep. Um, staff, uh, have been calling some play bill in barn, um, and they put on here from the highway shop and so we had to build up all the low spot, all the low spots in the barn, um. They are planning to, um, set new posts alongside the old rotten posts on the website of a barn, well, this coming winter and so that, but we got that to stable. Five. In the government building area, um, garbage containment, um, uh, was completed yesterday. Um, with the horns removed off either by the end of the week or the beginning of the next week, so we can put our garbage containers in there. Um, the stem wall around there is to help protect anything possibly to damage the courthouse, so. That, or painting the church's office in preparation for the carpet, the carpet for the office to be installed in the next few weeks. Um, my maintenance, senior tech and myself attended the con- safety conference last week. Well, very, very good, um. It's always re impressing to go to this, do them, so we had to ensure how some problems that need be done and, and we may talk about cybersecurity, they talk about safety measures, um, safety protocol at those conferences and things like that, so. Um, at the detention center, the main water line belt was replaced last week, so that is a functioning. Um, it was, yeah, it, when they took it apart, it was not looking good inside of it, so. At the park, everything has been winterized by the end of October. And then in the weed department, invoices were sent out at the end of October, which I am receiving things best. Otherwise, I've been working on getting items that were budgeted this year to get some. Which will lead into.
Yeah. Any questions? How did we, um, how did the, the park end up doing for the year?
Um, I'll get the stats for you next year. We were up actually on revenue, but down on, you know, um, campers, but primarily the revenue is because we offset last year, we made a slight increase in the last, which offset some of that, so. But overall down, I know I talked to some of those, um, the game fish, the last, their part. Camping deal was down a little bit too. I don't know if it's, you know, I mean, our peak in the last for camping was the year COVID, um, a lot is due because other states were not allowing anything there. We have a lot of those folks being in from, from, so that has tapered off. I think part of it too is, I think, economy, inflationist stuff, people backed off and from camping because.
We had an extremely wet camping season too.
And, and it was extremely wet. We did have quite a few people that canceled because of wet conditions being early on in the season.
Sounds good. Any more questions? Right, let's move on to, uh, item number nine, and this is action to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty seven contractual weed grant application.
Yeah, this grant is one that is, uh, applied every year. Um, the determining amount for this, for this grant is if how many counties meet criteria, the last, I mean, that's how it, it based off, I still left, I don't think, I think it's three hundred thousand dollars that's issued throughout the state for this, um, for this grant, and then they all get distributed depending on the qualification of what county has that other criteria.
Yes, on November fourteenth, that might kind of don't tell that many.
Yeah, it did, um, uh, because of last week, not meeting, kind of almost interfered with some of this for, for, for doing it till the end. I did apply, there's something, I'm sorry to apologize, but this is something that is done every year. Um, the only thing about it is that when I turned around and looked, I, oh, I forgot the last two years to keep an eye on that. This is my apologies. This has been going on for probably thirty years, plus, so.
Long time.
It has been a long time.
Glad you didn't miss the deadline, so can we have, uh, so, somebody want to make motions?
I'll take them.
Motion by McElhany, second by Schwer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Good, now you can go ahead with that application. Number ten, this is discussion of possible action to approve the purchase of a mower from Memorial Park, and this is a budgeted item.
Yeah, this is a budgeted item, um, I, I kind of was holding off on, on, on some of these items of that, like this one here, see where my budget was setting before I actually did a purchase. Um, we were going on pretty good for the mowers out there so far, but we were reaching more out there again with two to three thousand hours on it, um. I, I didn't know when I talked to Cody at WaterCom, he says, you know, amazed at me is how many hours you guys got on those mowers and actually how good the shape is. Because we routinely, maybe that's done very well, if there is an issue, we bring it in, have it done. Um, but, yeah, it was, it's getting stretched, we need to, uh, to get this done. Um, if you want to take fairs and so we had, there's roughly close to almost forty acres worth of, uh, lawn that gets mowed out at Memorial Park.
Wow.
Let's approve.
Motion by Johnson to approve, second, second by McElhany. Any discussion?
I will take note, it's for fifteen thousand, four hundred and four dollars.
Yep, thank you very much. Fifteen thousand, four hundred and four dollars even, okay. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. All right, let's move on to item number eleven, this is discussion, possible action to approve purchase of a vehicle. Straight or trade-in purchase for the director of facilities out of the government building budgets.
Hey, this is a negative, this is a budgeted item, like of course, I was waiting to see what, how this filled out for the end of the year. Um, I did reach out to him, went and turn around and had, um, the vehicle I had right now for trade-in and to add value, um, so I had a test drove six vehicles out there and, and see which one would fit the better criteria. I wanted something small SUV type, but I didn't want it too small because of, of of carrying stuff in the luggage area, um, because you end up turning around sometimes, you have to bring boxes, bring things back. So I wanted something fairly deep and had room. Um, so I did, did select one of the vehicles out there. Um, it is a cheap two thousand twenty-four GMC Terrain with thirty-three thousand miles, a little over thirty-three thousand miles on it. Um, the value of the vehicle put on was at twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars. With the trade-in, I've only given thirty-five hundred dollars for it, uh. To explain then, I ended up around, reached out to department heads to see if there's any interest for this vehicle instead of trading it in. Um, I did get reached back on one of the departments, um, was interested in the vehicle. The vehicle they currently, right now, they have, they don't trust it that well, so they have great interest into using it. So because of it, I, I did the quotes prior to all sending this out, but with the trade-in, it would have been twenty-one thousand, six hundred and ten dollars for the final. Uh, whereas the straight in price was, um, twenty-five thousand, one hundred and ten dollars. Um, after discussion with that, I would recommend doing the straight up, um, bid on this, um, item. This, um, item is used for many things, for, you know, for source for me, run into all different locations, plus run in for seminars. Uh, Brenda also uses this vehicle to run to her meetings and seminars, and it covers quite a ways across the state and so, so.
I'll make that a motion to approve that and note that it was under what you budgeted, like, um.
Yeah, um, I did budget for thirty thousand dollars this year on this item for with trade-in value also, so.
Second, that motion? Yeah, a motion by McElhany, a second by Johnson. Any discussion? The only, um, question I would have is, if we have a vehicle in the county that's not reliable, maybe that vehicle needs to go away, or we need to do something to make it reliable, so we're not gonna jump.
Right, I, I can state, we have that on that, but I pull that as reliable or unreliable. The one thing that I have turned around, thought, considered on that vehicle was to be able to utilize here for maintenance staff. Um, just to run errands around town. It, it is a large enough vehicle that they can haul a couple of things. I was taking note in.
What does it see, what vehicle is?
I believe it's the floor, it's an older one, I believe used to be the best one. Veterans ones, um, because in two, in another year and a half, we'll have to have something that will be out at the detention center. And I don't feel that we need to have a following pickup with a foul out there. We can turn around and utilize what we have the resources here already, just to provide me more utilization and less cost to that.
I think that's a good idea, yeah. Okay. Okay, any more discussion? All, all in favor, say aye.
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 Close, motion carries.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
All right, item number twelve is action to approve the auditor's account with the treasurer and note monthly register of duties.
Uh, do you have those documents in your pocket as well? That we have the amount at the last day of October. Um, all the change, everything that was counted in the treasurer's office. And then auditor's account with the treasurer, you have, uh, the custodial fees that was paid out to the school of the township, the cities and towns. The ending amount was forty-one million, one hundred and one thousand, nine seventy-one, nineteen. And the registered duties that were collected for, through the month of October was forty-one thousand, two seventy-nine, sixty thousand.
For a motion to approve. Motion approved by McElhany, second by Mr. Schwer. Any discussion? Questions on that? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Sounds like you're losing your voice.
I am, I guess.
All right, item number thirteen is action to approve a job description for administrative support position in the auditor's office.
Yeah, so this was a, uh, a job description that was previously, it was there, it was a shared position between auditor and the community service office. So I took the items off that were pertaining to the community service office and now made it strictly just for the auditor's office, so.
Has this been reviewed by HR?
No.
And HR is good with the description? Motion to approve, she took first by McElhany, second?
Second.
Second by Johnson. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. All right, action to approve a revised wage scale adding the auditor's office administrative support position.
That's basically the same thing, it's just taking the community service office, um, name off from that uh, pay grade twenty, step one, or all the steps, obviously, the pay grade twenty administrative support.
What, what was the pay grade before?
It was pay grade twenty, but it said auditor slash chairman.
Motion approved, motion by McElhany, second, second by Schwer. Any discussion?
Yeah, that's good. Uh, that number twenty-two, ninety-eight, is that right, Brown?
First, uh, no, step one, okay, what are you looking at? If you look at pay grade twenty, step one would be twenty thirty-one.
Okay, twenty thirty-one.
Yeah.
Okay, I just first use the, shade again the step six.
Yeah, so did that stay the same then?
Yeah.
Okay, so that paid, didn't change.
So.
Okay.
Okay.
Just the job title basically changed.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, it's my question.
Okay. The shading means on that chart, Brenda, I guess, I'm sorry, I missed you, but that'd be the halfway, just the halfway midpoint. Do we have a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, and a second.
And a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries, thank you. Um, item number fifteen is action to advertise and hire a part-time administrative support position to fill a vacancy in the auditor's office.
Right.
Motion by Johnson to approve?
Second.
Second by McElhany, discussion.
Just left it, so this is, the position is going to be under twenty hours, it's going to be only needed occasionally, uh, it's to help my employees in the office with tasks that they need help with, basically, uh, just kind of fill in wherever is needed at this point.
Under twenty hours, so there's no benefits, I need to go along with that.
Yep.
That's considered part-time.
Yeah, very part-time.
So we do have a motion and a second, any further discussion, please, yes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Um, item number sixteen, we'd like to note office closures for November twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. That would be Thursday and Friday of next week, uh, due to Thanksgiving, the Thanksgiving holiday, so happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Um, item number seventeen is action to approve the abatement application.
Oh, we have none.
Eighteen, action to approve claims for payment.
You have that in your packet, uh, I would just like to add some additional that came in in between. Um, and those items are the Watertown Public Opinion in the amount of, and I just put a great total on yours, do you want me to go through all of them? The total amount that they added was that four thousand, two ninety-eight, ninety-one, okay. So then you have the total amount of claims as two million, two hundred and ten, three ninety, twenty-six. The state passed the amount this month was six hundred and thirty thousand, nine ninety-eight, fifty-five, which left the total county claims at one million, five seventy-nine, three ninety-one, seventy-one.
Quick questions, Schwer. Page two, under State's Attorney, the, uh, Juvenile Justice Reinvestment.
Yep.
Kind of a large portion, you have, uh.
That's the amount we need to transfer over into her, that we paid the boys and girls class, and now I need to put that back in.
Some money we were getting that from the state.
Yeah, yeah, got to that eight.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by McElhany, second by Schwer. Any other questions or comments? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
Yes, right, the nine-one-one.
Okay. As a matter of record, I will refuse myself from this.
Yeah, so the nine-one-one search charge payment that we, uh, this is also passed through, that we will be, um, remitting, remitting to the city of Watertown. And this is for the, September twenty twenty-five remittance in, in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, eight forty-six, sixty-four.
Motion approved.
Motion by Johnson, second.
Second.
Second by McElhany. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries, thank you. Um, action to approve budget supplements?
Yeah, today.
Action to approve personnel changes. Action to approve travel requests. Public notices, item number twenty-two, a possible form of commissioners could be an attendance at the farm business banquet is coming up on Thursday, this week, November twentieth, at the event center. Five thirty PM social, and the fun starts at six PM with the dinner, and I think they have a, um, uh, ventriloquist this year, so if you're gonna attend that, I mean, I will be there, my, my spouse's birthday it is today, by the way, I ain't gonna tell you how old she is, but she's older than I am, it's a happy birthday to her, you know. You have anything?
Um, tonight's, uh, it's called pork producer thing, it's called swine be dying at the god's house.
Yeah. Swine be dying.
Swine be dying.
I love that.
Thought you were a cattle man.
I am, but I'm just representing them.
Aren't you a big guy?
I used to be, I retired from that as well.
Okay, okay. Yeah, all right.
Farm shops are pretty good.
Nothing else, commissioners? Okay, any old business? Yeah, I got it.
Okay.
Um. Uh, we'll take that under for new business, um, any old business. Um, Commissioner Gable could not be here today, but he did want to pass on that, um, as far as the jail update goes, footing work is continuing along with other things that need to be in place on the foundation's port, he says mostly plumbing. So they're trying to get everything done before the wrong gets squeal out there. And so that's an issue, so.
Very busy construction site when you drive by.
Yes, it is. It looks like you're making good progress out there, so that's good. Uh, the updates, so, all right, anything for the open, public comments? Open for the open, Mr. Collins, to the open?
Oh, yes. I just heard on the radio today, for those of us that sometimes don't hear, that, uh, apparently they, or yesterday, they opened the constructions on two twelve in Spanek County. sometimes go to Peter, that, uh, apparently they are, that's because they opened the constructions on two twelve in Spain County. Good. Final, because that does affect you if you go into Peter.
I've been to Peter like, I don't know, six or seven times since they closed that, and every time I go, I go a different way, because I can't remember the the way that I went, and I always seem to take an unimproved road that is just terrible.
Didn't say it's a, some sort of reconditioned surface for now, so it's not unfinished surface.
Yeah, but it's still open.
It's open, it's slowed down to fifty five.
Yeah, well, that's okay.
Is it east or west of though? It's, uh. It goes from Frankfurt to six miles, um, east of Redfield, just by Fisher Road. It's like a twelve mile section in the middle.
But it feels like a thirty mile detour.
It, it really stunk if you forgot about it, because, uh, yeah. The other one that, uh, we need to be prepared for is that, the bridge construction on fourteenth there in town. And I know a lot of people are confused when I tell them, you know, it's gonna be this way for almost a year. You know, they might have a heart attack, they can't wait, doesn't take that long to build that brick, you know, and, uh, they said, well, they, they, well, they said probably June or July next year, and I said, well, plan on October first. He said, I don't know, but, uh, uh, the problem there is they, the, uh, alternate route, you know, down to, for the tenth and then come out on the third one twenty eight, because people just have to avoid that area.
They don't have a choice, you're not gonna get through there, it's gonna be closed, so you'll have to take an alternative route, but generally, the reason the reason that they're doing that project this time of the year, in case people are wondering, is because of runoff. So with the, uh, hydrology studies that, that they did, Banner Associates and, and, uh, parties that are involved in this, they've determined that this is the best time of the year to do that project, so I don't know if the runoff's gonna be in the spring, but let's hope it's correct, so.
Yes, and I actually had a discussion with the constructors, and he feels that they'll be able to work it all winter because they'll have enough time before winter, whenever it does hit, to, you know, deep enough down in the ground, we need the footings and everything up and then work your way up, and, uh, yeah. Good. The big concern is, is hopefully we don't have the F word flooding its next running unit. They're up high enough where it won't affect the development.
I'm optimistic. So for no sound, all right. Where are we at? Um, we need an executive session. No need for executive session, missions? No? Okay, welcome to return, my, uh, Commissioner Johnson and Commissioner McElhany, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you, we are there.